Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the July 6th Regular Meeting of Zion City Council. Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Fryerson?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Mayor McKinnney?
Aye. Item number three, Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Berman, would you lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, sir.
This evening, we're going to have Janay Latifah, the Amadeu Muslim Community, offer our prayer of thoughts this evening. Thank you for being here, and great to see you again.
Thank you, members. On behalf of the Amadeu Muslim Community, we thank you again for this opportunity to pray with you and pray for our city. In this common tradition, we do assign the prayers so folks can pray in their own way as well. So I'll just give an idea of what I'll be praying for, and then we'll come together for a moment of silence where folks can pray in their own way. So I'll be drawing inspiration from a Quran verse that says, "And when my servants ask you about me, say, 'I am near,' and I answer the prayer of the supplicant when you praise them, so they should obey me and believe in me, so that they may follow the right way." So with this verse in mind, I'll be, first of all, praying with gratitude that we have come so far and are now seeing signs of relief from this pandemic. I'll also be praying with hope that the lessons learned over the past months will stick with us and help us see our way forward, and with hope that we realize the best way from any challenge is the path walked in unity, always working towards elastic collective triumph over short-term selfish gain. Lastly, I'll be praying with confidence that our Father has created us in His image, and confident that He is just, that He is compassionate, and that He is the true sustainer of us all, and confident that He will show us the path through our pain and help us praise Him in our hearts and honor Him with our actions. Our love for Him is reflected in our love for each other, and I pray that Zion's history of seeking God's love will light our way and lift our community to reach its full potential. Please join me in a silent prayer. In due course, it's...
All right, thank you very much. Item number four, Agenda Changes. Are there any agenda changes by any of the commissioners? If not, is there a motion to accept the agenda as presented? So moved. Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Fryerson?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Mayor McKinnney?
Aye. Item number five is Citizens' Comments. Thank you, Chief. Raymond Gilmore?
Okay, I'm from the Cypress Park subdivision, and we want to know if we can get a bigger big bed shelter and get maintained maintenance. From what we got, it seems like we need some maintenance on that location. We need a big bed shelter for these four families. And second, we got stop holes. We got two coming entries there. We got to buy holes for it. Somebody said I shouldn't run that down. Coming in the entrance there, you're silt. And also, we need a, for the whole subdivision, people jog, we have walkers, joggers, you know. So we'd like to get that mark off like a quarter mile or half mile or miles when we jog it, you know. And I want to know the data we got collected when you put up that stop sign, that light there. Did you say that was like a adult baby center, they huddled, you know? Like, you know that? And another question, if I'm standing in the middle of the street and I see something and I'm supposed to be there, why is it there if I see it? Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. One question, Mr. Gilmore, is the shelter you're talking about, is that a park district shelter?
Yes, it is.
So that would be something that you would call the Park District at 847-746-5500, and they would be the ones to address that, since that's their property?
That's ready, but...
Okay, thank you. Item number six, Consent Agenda?
Approval of Minutes of Regular Meeting Held on June 15, 2021 at 7:00 p.m. Approval of that release of full session minutes of meeting held on June 15, 2021 at 7:52 p.m.
Is there a motion to approve the minutes? So moved.
Second.
So moved by McDowell, second by Holmes. Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Fryerson?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Mayor McKinnney?
Aye.
Bills, vouchers, 137721 through 137797, from Huntington National Bank. Total, $620,738.13.
Is there a motion to approve the bills? So moved to approve the bills. Motion by Fisher? Second. Second by McDowell. Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Fryerson?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Mayor McKinnney?
Aye. Item number six C is City of Zion Proclamation for the Amadeu Muslim Community USA, whereas Amadeu Muslim Community USA was established in the United States on February 15, 1920, with original roots in Philadelphia, Pennsylvania, being the oldest American Muslim organization. And whereas the Zion chapter of the Amadeu Muslim Community USA was established in 1984, and whereas Amadeu Muslim Community USA is led by its international spiritual leader, His Holiness Mirza Mazur Ahmad, who is a tireless advocate for global peace and interreligious harmony, having graced the City of Zion with his presence in 2012. And whereas Amadeu Muslim Community USA has developed strong relationships with its neighbors in over 60 chapters across America while working towards promoting the true teachings of Islam and seeking to serve all of the human family. And whereas Amadeu Muslim Community Zion Chapter is laying the foundation stone for the first purpose-built mosque in Zion, Illinois on July 10, 2021. And now therefore, I, Mayor of the City of Zion, Illinois, do hereby extend congratulations to the Amadeu Muslim Community USA for this historic milestone. And witness here, I have hereby set my hand and cause the great seal of Zion as City of America on this, this 5th day of July, 2021. Congratulations. It's been a long project in the works, and everyone has had patience and certainly looking forward to your building, your mosque being completed.
Thank you. Want to take a picture, Mayor?
Sure. You want to, everybody take a picture out front?
Yeah, we can take a picture.
We're going to take it right up, right in front here.
Just help me help your camera. Do the handshake. Which one, McKinnney? Whatever one, I'm sorry. And now we're doing, now just like a picture, everybody smile right there. You guys trust the flag, we can't... Was it just the governor, just the mayor, too, or no?
Oh, okay. Is there a motion? So moved to approve? Second. First by Fryerson, second by Holmes. Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Fryerson?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Mayor McKinnney?
Aye. Motion passes. Item number seven, Consider Passing Resolutions As Followed, A, Amending Personnel Authorization?
Will you jump on that one?
Please.
All right. So the personnel authorization is just the council's approval of the number of people we could hire up to. We don't fill all of these positions, it just gives the authority for us to be able to fill, should we operationally decide to go that route. We have not updated it in a while, we've had a lot of turnover of the organization and consolidation and all kinds of stuff, so we just thought it would be a good opportunity to revisit this and get it correct to our current operational plans.
When was the last time of updating Administrator Nate?
I think we've updated it bits here and there. 2019 was the last time? Okay. But this was a comprehensive, like, city-wide, get everything correct, so...
Okay. Is there a motion to amend the personnel authorization?
So moved.
So moved by Holmes?
Second.
Second by McDowell. Are there any questions or comments?
I have a question. Why does it necessarily, this is just a, why does it have to be an exhibit rather than an all-encompassing?
I don't honestly know. An exhibit, for instance. I don't know, that's a legal issue, or that's just a standard kind of a language for a resolution?
I will, only a side question. It's, there's really, it's, now we have always done this, in my understanding, so we don't, we haven't tried this one. We've always done this through admin, and it has always been exhibit. So the council practice has been to make it just exhibit. When we change it, or when the city updates it the next time, if it's the council's pleasure, we can incorporate it into the body. To be brief, sometimes it is easier to work off of an exhibit as a master, because then you could, you could swap out factors as they tell and change, as you help a contractor experience yourself. Sometimes it's just easier to work with the opposite terms. But honestly, it's, this is an art, not a science thing. It's not like there's a state process as a safety device.
More stylistic.
Absolutely. And if you guys want us to change the style, we can change the style.
I would prefer to change the style going forward.
Absolutely. So the next time, I'll interface with the clerk, this is usually done in-house, it's a safe cost, but I'll interface with the clerk and Commissioner Nate, who does a very nice job of putting this together for us, and I'll make sure that it's done stylistically or it's embedded rather than as an exhibit.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions, comments? Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Fryerson?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Mayor McKinnney?
Aye. Item number seven B, Resolution for Maintenance Under Illinois Highway Code, MFT Funds for the 2021 Road Projects, per Director Roberts.
Thank you, Mayor. The attached document will file a resolution that is required by IDOT for utilization of the motor fuel funds. Additionally, staff has recommended extending the proposed repair on Elizabeth Avenue of 350 feet. An estimated cost for additional work is $34,182.20. The funds are to be utilized for the 2021 road program. An amendment to the MFT fund budget is, also requested, staff request and recommends approving the IDOT resolution for expenditure of $741,485.26 from the motor fuel tax fund, and approval for an MFT budget amendment in the amount of $34,182.20.
Is there a motion? So moved. So moved by McDowell?
Second.
Second by Fisher. Comments or questions?
Just one question for clarification. Is it Elizabeth or Elijah?
Elijah.
Okay.
What did I say?
You said Elizabeth. Just wanted to make sure. Thank you.
Thinking of Sanford's old wife. Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Fryerson?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Mayor McKinnney?
Aye. Item number seven C, Resolution for Maintenance Under Illinois Highway Code, Rebuild Illinois Bond Fund for the 2021 Road Program, per Director Roberts.
Thank you, Mayor. The attached resolution is required by IDOT for utilization of the rebuilt Illinois Bond Fund. The Rebuild Illinois Bond Fund is an additional allotment to the city's motor fuel tax fund. Expenditure of these funds are required to be tracked separately. The funds are to be utilized for the 2021 road program. Staff request and recommend approving the IDOT resolution for expenditure of $268,152.13 from the Rebuild Illinois Bond Fund.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
So moved by McDowell?
Second.
Second by Holmes. Questions or comments? Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Fryerson?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Mayor McKinnney?
Aye. Item number eight, Consider Passing Ordinances As Followed, 8A, Amending Chapter 56, Article 3, Section 56-56, Parenthesis 13A of the Zion Municipal Court Regarding Liquor Control Regulations, per Mayor McKinnney. This was simply an item in our liquor code that we needed to clarify. One of our commissioners, Chris Schamansky, was asking about it, and we just updated the language in liquor control area to clarify the item. So is there a motion?
So moved to approve?
Second.
Motion by Fisher, second by Holmes. Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Fryson?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Mayor McKinnney?
Aye. Item nine, 8B, excuse me, Temporarily Extending and Enlarging the Fee Payment Period For Businesses Licensed Under Design Liquor Control Ordinance, per Mayor McKinnney. As we did during the pandemic, we allowed some of our businesses who have liquor license to extend their payments to help them with some of the financial struggles that we, they were having, and we are temporarily extending and enlarging the fee payment period for some of the businesses as well, to help them finish up as we get through the pandemic and they get back to business. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion by McDowell?
Second.
Second by Fisher. Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Commissioner Fryson?
Aye.
Mayor McKinnney?
Aye. Item number nine is Discussion, Authorization, and Approval, 9A, Consider Approving Other City Funds for Budget for Fiscal Year May 1, 2020 through April 30, 2022, per Administrator Nate.
Thank you, Mayor Commissioners. What we're looking at tonight is the general operating fund of the city and all other funds of the city except for street and bridge and motor fuel tax and hotel motel tax, which were approved individually at a prior council meeting. Additionally, for those that missed it, you missed two hours of fantastic discussion going through 23 pages of budget last week, going through line by line. So I will save rehashing all of that. I would just say that we are still in a financial deficit position, that we are proposing borrowing, unless we have some revenue unanticipated, to fill that this year until we can get census results or other revenue sources, but that's all factored in here, and I would recommend approval of the funds presented for the fiscal year 2020 budget.
Is there a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Fisher?
Second.
Second by Holmes. Questions?
Yeah, just questions. I'd like to go through line by line, if that's okay. No?
You can do whatever. I'm here for whatever you want, laws.
Just a couple of questions. Do we actually collect host fees from Viola, or is it now GFL?
It's GFL, it's just the general adjournment account name that's in there.
What is your projection of actually receiving the ARPA funds?
They were supposed to be issued, I believe, by mid-June. I can't seem to get an answer as to whether they even got, whether the state has got those funds. I've asked the state, and they're looking into it. It was supposed to go to the state 60 days after the signing of the bill, which was March 13th, and then released to the municipalities 30 days after that. I think they're still finalizing the record-keeping request process, because it was just a lot of money issued and then figure out how to track it later. So we have not received those funds yet, but it will be coming probably within the next two months, per discussion with our federal representatives.
We have the amount for the ARPA funds in the budget, so we're anticipating those funds to come.
Yes.
Right, so...
But that will be covering our beginning deficits that we basically borrowed in prior years.
Yeah, right. So I'm looking at, on page two, line 63, the financing. So is that 1,221,832? Is that, where is that money coming from?
That's essentially the deficit that we need to borrow, whether it's bonds or tax anticipation warrants. That would be less if we had other revenues inaccessible.
So we need both. We need the ARPA funds?
Correct.
And we need another funding source? And we have yet to approve a TAW, is that right?
Right. We wouldn't do that until probably December or January if it was necessary.
All right. Is there a likelihood that we will receive any funding from the fuel store currently?
Probably not by that time period. I mean, we're still pushing it almost every day, trying to get co-sponsors on the bill. The Stranded Act is what we're looking at. It's in committees in the House and the Senate, gathering co-sponsors, they're playing their politic games to try and get it out of the committee onto the floor. We gain a little bit of traction every year on it. We're further ahead than we've ever been, but it's still an uphill battle. I wouldn't anticipate that it would be this fiscal year, and I don't want to put it in the budget calendar.
Was there any discussion as to a plan if these funds do not become available to us, the ARPA, or if we decide not to borrow any more money? I mean, was anything talked about in this? That's what my question is.
Yeah, I mean, it was basically presented that, you know, we kind of went through this last year with the, I think we had a $1.8 million hole to plug last year. We got CARES Act funding, which was $1,001,000, and then some of the sales tax and income tax revenues came in better than anticipated, so we were able to kind of skate by last year. The likelihood of the ARPA funds not coming in is very low. I mean, we can say that about every revenue line item if it doesn't come in, so that one I'm comfortable with. So we're really looking at the 1.2 million, what would we do if we didn't borrow that? There would have to be a significant expense cut to address that as the alternative, which I don't know that we could, I mean, all the other departmental budgets were kept flat, if not reduced.
Yeah.
Or we have to find another revenue source.
I, there's no FAP in this question, so thank you for all your hard work.
Commissioner McDowell, another avenue we've been pursuing is that through the Mayor's Commission on Water Equity, it's involved, that involves 106, 107 cities in the US, throughout the US and Canada, that are on the Great Lakes and St. Louis waterways. I've been tasked to chair that commission, and we have also have several meetings with President Biden's infrastructure team to talk about getting money in the new infrastructure plan that could be able to help us too, even with the spent fuel rods. So we've been trying to attack this at every different angle, from a financial standpoint or tactical standpoint, to be able to get money for the spent fuel rods. Any other?
Chief Barton just reminded me, he's been working with the state. We approved it a few years ago, but then we just re-amended it, basically the tax intercept program with the state for outstanding fines, fees, tickets that have not been collected. That has been approved by them now, they're going through training and testing. We have $3 million of outstanding fines and fees that have been accumulated throughout the years. What this does, what this program does is basically for anyone that files a state return, if they're getting a refund, the state will intercept that first to pay off outstanding fines and fees. So people that have got tickets, ignored it, whatever, left town, bitch, as long as they're in Illinois, finally return, it's basically to lean on those tax returns. So we're optimistic, we'll get a good chunk, the collection agency is optimistic. I mean, we're looking at probably on the low end of $300,000 to $400,000 on the first go-round, that obviously reduces over time. But that will be part of this year's budget because of the next tax filing season, by the time they actually issue the funds. But it is a larger resource that is in place now that we should see.
Thank you for that reminder, Chief Barton, and for the additional information, Dave.
Will people be notified, or will it just happen?
Yes, ma'am. They've received a number of notices already prior to, they know that the citations or ordinance violations were sent to collections, they get notice of that, they get a second notice. They'll also get another notice when it goes to MCOA, the collection agency, and then at that point, they're not going to get any more notices because they've been notified three times. If they do question it, we have, we have, part of the program is we have to have in place a call, basically a call center, to allow people to call and question why that happened, and give them the answers that they need. It will be important.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Fryson?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Mayor McKinnney?
Aye. Item number nine B, Request Approval Of Hotel Motel Tax Grant Application For Potawatomi Trails Powell, per Administrator Nate.
Thank you, Mayor Commissioners. Every year, we approve a pool of funds from the Hotel Motel Tax Fund. It's a separate fund from the general fund, we can't use that to offset our general operations. It has to be used for promotion and tourism, so we have a grant program. We allocate about $35,000 a year for events. Maximum grant is $10,000 for an event. We're happy to see that events are starting to return, starting to go back up. Potawatomi Trail Powell has been here for 27 years, is that right? 27?
We missed that last year.
Well, yeah. Of course, we missed that last year, but, so you have the application before you, staff scored a review, and we would recommend the grant application in an amount not to exceed $8,000 for the cost of goods and services associated with printing and marketing for the 2020 event.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion by Holmes, second by McDowell. Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Fryson?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Mayor McKinnney?
Aye. Item number nine C, Request Permission To Enter Into Agreement With Spyglass Group For Audit Services, per Administrator Nate.
Thank you, Mayor Commissioners. We contracted with Spyglass back in 2016. What they do is they look at all of our telecoms... What they do is they look at all of our telecom services, payroll services, cell phone, pagers, all that stuff, make sure our contracts are being followed, we're being charged the right rates, make sure that there's nothing out there that's basically more competitive. They do inventory of our entire system, make sure all lines that are active are being utilized. If there's deadlines out there, get them off our bills, and we get a good inventory of our entire phone system. They do not get compensated unless there are savings, that their fee comes out of what they're able to find and deliver as savings, and then they get 12 months of that savings. And last time we did this, there was actually $28,000 of savings. Again, since it's been five years since we've done this, we thought it'd be good to revisit. There's really no risk to us and just see if it's been kind of lying creep over the years, changes in services. So I would recommend entering into the contract with Spyglass as presented.
Is there a motion?
I'll move to approve the contract with Spyglass.
Motion by Fisher?
Second.
Second by McDowell. Any questions or comments? Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Freyerson?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Mayor McKinnon?
Aye. Motion carries. Item number 9D, consider approval of an increase of the hourly rate for paid-on-premises firefighter or paramedics per Chief Street.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Commissioners. Tonight I'm requesting approval of an increase of the hourly rate paid to our paid-on-premise, also known as our POP personnel firefighter/paramedics. This follows the regular budget discussions with Administrator Nabel over the past month or two. This will be an effort to recruit both new part-time firefighter/paramedics as well as retain those that we currently employ. My request an increase to $28 an hour after a POP has worked with us for 600 hours. On average, that would be about it here, some more, some less. This potentially mean about a 10% increase to that budget line, but it will result in a decrease in the overtime budget line as less POP slots will need to be filled by sworn full-time employees earning overtime.
Is there a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Freyerson, second by McDowell. Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Freyerson?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Mayor McKinnon?
Aye. Item number 10, departmental commentary. Oh, excuse me, I'm sorry. 9E, I marked it off. Consider approval of battalion chief stipend per Chief Street.
Thanks, Mayor. Our department currently has three full-time sworn positions vacant. We're working on filling those through our exam right now, but it takes quite a while to fill those. And that, those openings are due to recent retirements and resignations. Our hiring list was previously exhausted the last time we got some openings, and our Fire Police Commission is currently working diligently on establishing that new hiring list. Unfortunately, this will take a number of months before it's completed and a number of months before the hires are processed and can begin working with us. Some of our battalion chiefs are willing to work some extra shifts since the other ranks really are being burdened with a lot of overtime right now because of all these openings. And even though historically we don't really have a provision available to have our exempt management personnel work extra, or more specifically receive compensation for working beyond the normal hours. So I'm requesting an approval of $1,000 stipend for 24-hour shifts that our battalion chiefs are able and willing to fill in. This will decrease the overtime burden currently faced by our lieutenants and our firefighter and paramedics. And I would ask that this would be effective immediately until October 1st, at which time we believe and we really hope to have our hires in place.
All right, is there a motion?
I'll make the motion to approve the stipend for DCs.
Motion by Freyerson?
Second.
Second by McDowell. Questions or comments? Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Freyerson?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Mayor McKinnon?
Aye. Item number 10, departmental commentary. Director Ayerson?
Just a reminder, Saturday, August 7th, we need to do, to be excited to look at Harry Crosswalk, 18th and 21st. We've got flyers together, we're beginning these out at City Ball, which will be posted on the city website, social media. Just a reminder, we need to do on Saturday, August 7th.
And other stipulations with that, I think when people show up, they either have to have a city permit Zion City sticker showing and a driver's, Zion driver's license, if I'm correct.
Yes, we'll verify that they're city residents because, you know, a lot of tires and electronics from other communities, so we'll coordinate that with the law.
And this year, last year, I know we had an abundance of tires. Is there a limit in which, what tires, how many tires people can bring?
Some, eight per household.
Eight per household, okay. August 7th. And this is our third or fourth cleanup day?
It's going to be the fourth.
Be the fourth cleanup day, and it seems to get better each year, more efficient.
I guess so.
All right.
Well, well.
Thank you, Director Ayerson. Director Roberts?
Thank you, Mayor. We recently received a notice from Lake County Department of Transportation. They are requesting all public entities to provide them input. They are looking at Genosha Road and 21st Street to do something with that intersection. That would be the intersection by the school, the high school. I think they're looking at a roundabout or traffic light. There's a website you can go to. You can call Public Works' main phone line and they'll provide you the website address if you would like that. The other thing I would like to mention is our 2021 road program will be starting the 12th, and that will run for two and a half months. We'll have a list on the website of the roads that are being impacted.
And about how many miles of road will be impacted during this? I looked at it on the sheet, but.
They should be math quick.
It's 1.9.
1.9.
Thank you. Thank you, Director Roberts.
Because I can't even think of the road program. You're on your math.
That's what I was checking on today, just math today. Human Resources Director Karen Graves, do you have anything for us tonight?
Yes, I do, thank you. We're doing pretty well with some of our staffing needs, and our gap is getting smaller and smaller with the positions that we have available with our Public Works Department. And today, we have a new part-time position that's available and currently in our accounting and finance department for a minimum of 20 hours a week is our kind of position, and that individual will be helping out in the front, handling the cash, clerical support, and assisting us with the painting of the city stickers that everyone should be purchasing too. So we're at the side edge for this opportunity, and this is available on our website when you are interested in doing it.
All right, thank you. Chief Street?
All right, I was hoping I could call next. Just a couple of quick things. Flyers are out here in the lobby, they'll be on our website, Facebook page of our blood drive July 22nd. It seems like we always hear of a blood shortage, but it is real. So many surgical patients, not to mention the accidents that do occur unfortunately in our area need blood. So there is a shortage, and so we just hope that you can all help spread the word at your places of employment or around your neighborhoods, and hopefully you can participate yourselves. So July 22nd from 9:00 to 2:00 at our fire station number one, we can hope you can participate with us. The other thing I wanted to mention just real briefly is a reminder on being safe down by the lake. We had a couple unfortunate incidents over the past weekend, both in our own area and in Beach Park, at the state park. Just please use extreme caution if you're going down to cool off in the lake. The currents change quickly and rapidly, and, you know, we do have a dive team that we can scramble pretty quickly, and we call for help from our neighbors. But even quickly means 20 to 30 minutes before we can actually have divers down in the water. And that's a long 20 to 30 minutes if you're facing a problem. So we just ask our residents and visitors to be real careful down by the lake when they're enjoying this nice summer weather.
Thank you, Chief Street. Administrator Nabel?
Every time. Two items, sound like throw a record with it, but currently we have a stay-on-water shut-off due to the pandemic and the state guidelines, but that will be ending, I believe, August 23rd, I think is the current extension from the state. So September 1st, we are looking at, unless it gets extended by the state again, we are looking at reinstating shut-offs for past due water accounts. Everyone's, every account that is eligible for a shut-off currently has been receiving notices saying that they are eligible, that we are currently doing shut-offs, but to bring that account current as soon as possible with whatever they can pay towards it, as well as contact information at the township. They have the lists for eligibility as well to be able to assist, or you can contact 211 to get access to more resources or places where there are resources available. We want to try, we started sending out notices in March. We wanted to get as much lead time as possible for accounts that are past due, but there are quite a few out there right now, so trying to vet, address in advance. Secondly, we talked about a little bit of the Stranded Act, but the Design Quarterly coming out, we have notification there on the current status of the Stranded Act, and we are asking for public's participation to contact our federal representative and senator, Representative Brad Schneider and Senator Tammy Duckworth, encouraging them, pushing, lighting a fire under them to get support behind this bill. It's crucial to the future operations of Zion, the Zion community as a whole, not just the city, but the schools and the other taxing bodies as well. So please, when you see that, reach out to them, and nothing, no, not for us.
Dave, with the water shut-off, do we have payment plans offered to our residents?
Typically, we do, but right now the payment, we're not going to make people come in and sign up payment plans right now because there aren't shut-offs right now. So typically, we don't do more than a three to six-month payment plan, and since it's been six months, it will have been six months since they were shut-off eligible, whatever people can pay towards it, we're taking, rather than enforcing a monthly payment plan. Typically, we will not do payment plans after the bill's already due. It's essentially kind of like extending bad credit when you know somebody's already behind or late on their bill. We always do it up to the date, the due date, but like I said, since we have, we haven't done this for a year and almost six months, 18 months that we've had shut-offs going. Anything people can pay is their payment plan right now, trying to current before September.
And again, David mentioned a number that we've been pushing and we've been talking with United Way about for our residents. Call 211 if you're having any kind of emergency. And I've met with the 211 board of the United Way. They want to get more involved with some of the faith-based groups to be able to disseminate their information, also with the schools. If someone is having financial difficulty, emotional difficulty, whatever it is, if you're having trouble with rent assistance, they've been provided funds through the county and through the different acts by the federal government to be able to help our residents. And in talking to their advisory panel last week, they said the highest percentage of calls that they receive are from the city of Zion. So we're going to be working more closely with them and with our township with the 211, very simple number to call to be able to make sure we get the information disseminated to all of our residents who might not follow city council meetings, who also who might not be on Facebook. So spread that word. Anybody having any issues, be sure to call 211. One of the disturbing trends that we've had here recently is we've had a couple of teenagers who have succumbed to gun violence, and we want to make sure that if anyone is suffering depression, I don't care what age you are, this has been a very tough year, even though we're coming out of it, the remnants of COVID still remain with us. And so if you're having, they wanted us to know to make sure that before you get to a crisis point with anything, whether it's financially, emotionally, or any other way, please reach out and call them. So that number is 211, very easy to remember. We have information in our foyer about it, and we will continue to post this information on Facebook. Last thing that Administrator Nabel talked about, we did meet with Congressman Snyder within the last couple of weeks to talk about the importance of the Stranded Act. He's been very good about updating us on everything that they're doing and the bipartisan cooperation that they're trying to gather to make sure that we finally do get some funds for the spent fuel rods on our lakefront. So thank you, Administrator Nabel, for the work that you continue to do on all fronts for us and our residents. Chief Barton?
Thank you, Mayor. To piggyback off your 211, we have a bunch of flyers and posters in the police department if you need help, or if you don't have a phone or whatever, you can stop by, we can get you that over there. I just want to commend the officers, SCU detectives and patrol commanders this weekend. They had a very busy weekend. They defused a few problems because of their proactive plan. They did a good job this weekend. I understand there were still a lot of fireworks complaints and a lot of fires that went off, so I'd like to just make aware again, the noise ordinance and fireworks ordinance that this council has passed. We will be enforcing that. To date, we've issued 50 warnings and one citation, 50 separate warnings, not the same person, but 50 separate locations, and after issue of warning, we documented all that and kept the track, so the next one is a citation. And then I had a phone call, I was speaking with one of our residents tonight that was dealing with an issue in her neighborhood, and I just wanted to reiterate what we've done as far as putting the district map on both the city website and the police department Facebook page as to, so you can identify what district you live in. And then we've also listed the sergeants that are in charge of those districts, so you have a direct email to a sergeant. If it's an emergency, call 911, please. But if it's a non-emergency, or if it's a problem, a nuisance problem that you're having in your neighborhood, please feel free to drop a line directly to that sergeant. We do weekly meetings on, they're required to do weekly letters as to activity in their district, and that goes up to the patrol commander and then ultimately meet and establish and head meetings.
So that information will be put out on the Zion Police Facebook page?
It's already there.
It's already there?
Yeah.
And it's a great, it's a great tool for our residents to be able to, when our call center gets flooded by calls, to be able to identify an issue in your neighborhood and provide the address of the activity so that they can check up on it. And I know one of the things that the police department has done is last year we had a lot of offenders for the fireworks, violations of our noise ordinance, and they were sent letters in advance this year about the noise ordinance and that they were resident that had been pinpointed, and as if there were any violations this year, that they would be cited. So we're trying to do what we can to make sure that the environment in which our citizens live in, there's a high quality of living. And it's not only for our residents, it's for our pets, some of the pets that are absolutely petrified by fireworks. Our citizens, our older citizens, our veterans, who some suffer from PTSD. So when people are setting off fireworks, they have to be aware of all of the people that they are impacting, and not only in their neighborhood, throughout the city. So we're trying to get our arms around this. It's a tough task, but thank you and your department chief for taking on the task and for handling the calls that you handled throughout the course of the weekend, weekend about these violations. Any of our commissioners have any?
Mayor, just want to piggyback on some of the fireworks that were going on on the Fourth of July, early morning, July 4th. One of our church members at Christ Community Church found this nine-millimeter bullet that impacted the sidewalk on the church property. So not only were fireworks being shot off, but also people were discharging firearms, and we have the result of it. So not only is that an illegal activity, it's very dangerous, just thinking that that's a sidewalk that many people travel on, and. a sidewalk that many people travel on, and could have resulted in a mortality, as well as just property damage that occurs if a wall comes down, so responsible firearm owners and users know that you should always know your target and your backstop. Firing into the air, there is no target, and there is no backstop. Well, there is a backstop, in this case, it was a sidewalk, so that's a very dangerous activity, and it's not really celebratory, it's dangerous. On a happier note, this last week, we had another many hands project in our community, so some of our Zion youth were out and about, and visited 10 homeowners in the community, cleaning up yards, doing small projects, so I just want to commend those youth and their supervisors that were out on many hands project, and helping some of our homeowners that needed some assistance this last week.
Thank you, Commissioner McDowell, and I know that even working with the county on the Community Housing Development Commission, that they are, have included a lot of funds, or they're allocating funds for residents to be able to clean up their properties in cities like Zion, cities that have been overlooked. One last note that I have to read, Representative Mason texted our city attorney, and we've talked with her pretty regularly about just following up on the state budget, resigning the Zion allocation, so we're in touch with our state rep, Joyce Mason, and Senator Melinda Bush, about everything that's going on in Springfield, and they are working hard, of course, to make sure that we get some of the funds that we need to continue to function as a municipality. Other commissioners with comments?
I'll just echo what the chief was saying about our police and fire. I know they were working hard all weekend, I saw a lot of patrol, I saw a lot of, you know, walking up, engaging with the residents, some of the block parties, or not block parties, but like backyard parties, so we did have some gunshots in our neighborhood as well, where people were firing into the air, and response time was very quick, and they handled it in a very professional manner, I mean, as expected, but just want to commend them, I know a lot of people were, some were coming back from vacation, and this was their first shift on, and, you know, they were going pretty late into the night, so, again, thank you. The other thing I would mention is, to your point about some of the gun violence and mental health, we've been partnering with Lake County Health Department to do mental health first aid training, so if anyone is interested in being involved with that, please see me after city council, and we can see about getting you signed up, just so people can understand the signs of it and the symptoms, and, you know, be able to lend a hand, talk people through, and recommend the proper resources when people are having a mental health crisis, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner?
I just wanted to take the opportunity, not just in my capacity as commissioner, but when I drive around town, particularly this time of year, I'd like to see people taking care of their property, and I want to thank Director Ianson and his team for the nice job that they have been doing, basically, not in a skeleton crew, but a pretty thin crew, so thank you. That's all of us.
Thank you. Mr. Fisher?
I don't hope so much you have a comment, but I do have a question for Administrator Naval. Where are we at with the Popeyes? That seems to be one of the premier questions in the city, is people are asking, where is the Popeyes?
Well, I had kind of wished that the developers had said last year that they'd be done, that it'd be done and built by the end of last year, because I don't know that they've encountered the state of Illinois, but there was a lot of permitting, a lot of back and forth, plan review with the state on their entrance, their location, basically, they now have their letter of comments, and Director Roberts can correct me if I'm wrong on any of this, they have their letter of comments to basically go back to the state, but what we're doing is working with them on putting their entrance off of 34th Street, and potentially egress, egress off of Colgate behind there, so that they can just move forward without even having an entrance off a shared road, start construction, start moving, have it be solely internal with city review, while they simultaneously run in parallel with the state to continue working on their entrances in the front, but that's been the significant delay in getting that going, is getting that approved, and we're basically working around that so that they can move forward, because they're chomping at the bit, they've been held up too long than they want, but it is still coming, and that is still the plan, so you can comment on Facebook.
I finished up the review last week, and sent that back to the engineers to get approved on that, so they should be able to move forward with the construction. They're going to entrance off 34th, but however, still plan on trying to achieve their item.
We also have the proper names and people at iDOT, and have their attention, so that when the letter of comments does come back, we will be making sure it escalates directly to the top, and doesn't end up on the bottom of another pile to start the process all over again, so we'll try to be, try to work with them on their behalf to expedite, once it goes back to the state.
Thank you both for the update, I'm sure the public will appreciate that. I would just add, please support local businesses, please go out to local restaurants, you know, stop at your local hardware store, you know, just buy here at home, if at all possible, so that's all I got.
All right. I don't have much to add, other than what everybody's talked about, I really wanted to take the opportunity to thank all of our department heads for the great work that they do, and I know it's been a tough year and a half, we keep talking about this with the pandemic, we've been working short-staffed for quite some time, and yet, our department heads continue to find creative ways to be able to fulfill the services that our citizens are paying for, and during the pandemic, we didn't lay off staff, we kept our staff intact so that we could continue to provide the services that our citizens deserve, and we'll continue to do that, but it's taken a lot of discussion with our department heads, our commissioners, and just some thought-provoking conversations of how we can be creative and get some things done, so thank you to our department heads, and thank you to our citizens for the patience that you've had with what we've been trying to do to streamline our city operations. Item number 11 is announcements, on July 20th, at 6:00 PM, there's a Zion Township Board meeting, and at 7:00 PM, there's a Zion City Council meeting. August 3rd, can't believe we're talking about August already, that it's 7:00 PM, there's a Zion City Council meeting. We do have another item that will be dealt with after closed session, so right now, number, item number 12 is closed session pursuant to 5 ILCS 120, that's two open meeting acts for the discussion of filed pending, and or probable imminent litigation, collective bar names, sale of real estate, and personnel. Please feel the straight, stay here if you'd like, and hear what we have to, what we need to finish up city council business with item 13, or if you want to leave. Thank you for coming out and participating in our city council meeting at night, and again, as you talk with people throughout the community, I know there's a lot of people with a lot of reaches, have our citizens call 211, the United Way, and their staff, they are very committed to providing us with the help that so many of our residents so desperately need. Is there a motion to go into closed session?
So, move.
Motion by Fryerson, second by Holmes. Clerk, please call a roll.
Commissioner Fryerson?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Mary Kitty?
Aye, and we'll come back out for, after our closed session.
He's going to hang out.
So.
They get your water?
Drive safely.